Good morning. This is July 17th, the North Wachem Fire and Rescue District 21 Board of Commissioners's regular meeting. We'll call it to order and we can start with the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll call Bruce Ansel.
Joe Crawford.
Craig Anthony.
David Lawson, can they have the present?
Jason Baderby.
And Kimberly McMurray is excused for family reasons, and Matt is excused for medical reasons. Any public comment? Open the volunteer pension board meeting. We have the approval of the June 20th minutes. Is there a motion to approve?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
It's unanimous. Volunteer separations. Chief?
We have three. Brandon Millsap is leaving the district. He's moved out of state, got a new job, so he's moved to Idaho last week. Kim Gates has 18 years of service with District Four, and just due to participation, time to separate, lack of participation. And then Sean Atwood has been with the fire district for 15 years. He's been a really solid responder out of the tender group and has changed employment and no longer lives in the district.
All right, so we need a motion to approve their separations. Is that... Is there a motion to approve the separations of the three pension?
Second.
Moved and seconded? Any discussion? Thank them all for their service, I'm sure.
Yes, each of them will get a plaque.
There's no one? All in favor? It's unanimous? I'll close the volunteer pension board meeting and open the regular Board of Commissioners meeting. We have the approval of the consent agenda, which includes the June 20th meeting minutes, staff reports, financial reports, voucher payroll and benefits. The total revenue for June was $147,770.05. Total expenditures for July was $1,040,872.02. Direct deposit payroll, $438,016.25. Payroll taxes, $104,161.44. Benefits voucher, $273,518.27. LNI second quarter voucher, $144,206.49. And monthly expenditure voucher, $80,904.27. Is there a motion for approval of consent? Sorry?
Motion, yeah.
Second, second, sorry.
Second. Discussion. Chief, did you want to talk about anything during this portion? Anything on the agenda?
Yes, there is one piece. That is, I put in, or Jenny put in an article, give it, you two articles each actually, about a recent fire in Massachusetts, Fall River. It was a fire in a nursing home. They had eight fatalities. And primary reason for the attributed to the, the retributing of the fatalities due to understaffing. There was a lack of staff when the first units arrived on scene. Now, I will concede that this is a much more urban area than we are. They had resources there much quicker. Their understaffing was the fact that three quarters of their engines were only staffed with three versus four. Due to the size of the facility, they had firefighters doing single, you know, solo searches for people, solo rescues. They were, it's one of those incidents where they were overmatched from the beginning. But with the additional, if, had they been fully staffed, the additional eight firefighters that would have been on scene, you can only imagine what kind of work they can do. I gave you two articles, one from the union perspective, which I support, what the union says, what the IFF says in this case. Also more of a news article talking about the incident itself. And I don't bring you this article to advocate for four-person staffing, but we are reaching a critical point in North Wachem's future, our financial future, where we're going to have to make some hard decisions about staffing our rigs as we do today, which is three, which is minimally. And I just wanted to put it on the record that here is, here is another example of staffing. And if you were to scale this emergency to our area, they, whether it's a staff halt or an adult family home, or in, you know, on the east side of the county, or the east side of the district, or responding mutually to Linden, this, this could be us. And so I...
Are you working on any safer grants?
We are, we are not working on any safer grants because safer grants were unfunded this year. We are working on some Department of Ecology grants for equipment and bunker gear, but no personnel grants this year.
All right, anything else? Any comments, questions for the consent agenda? All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous? Commissioner meeting reports. Commissioner Anthony, do you have...
I attended two city council meetings. The one that was last Monday, they approved going out to vote for the annexation of the 500-plus acres located in East Blaine. And the very next agenda item was to start moving forward the process to move the UGA to what they refer to as Blaine West, which is a Semiamu area. The DNX, they have to have 60% of apparently the city vote, the annex, just not the area. I did have a question for the chief to help me understand what I listened to. Is when they, when they go forward with the UGA proposal, moving it over to the Semiamu area, what provisions are there about public safety, fire, fire services, EMS services? A majority of that area would be probably classified as a nine under our current system. So as they go forward with the UGA, what role, if any, does being a class nine result in?
I, I don't know specifically, as this, we'll have to do some research and learn how this process works. I can tell you, we've had preliminary discussions with the city, not, not about this topic specifically, but this topic has come up. And we've, they've asked us to just staff the station at Semiamu, and we told them what the financial impact of that would be. And they understand that we can't do it, but wish we could do it. They, they're updating their, they're going to have to update their comp plan, Blaine is, which means we're, we're in the process of slowly updating ours as well with the county. And so there'll be a, there'll be a whole process we go through, but I can't tell you specifically. I would recommend adding it to the agenda so that we can, you can hold admin's feet to the fire about keeping you updated about what's going on with this project as it moves forward.
We most certainly need to figure out how to keep it not in the rearview mirror.
Correct.
Because I'd hate to miss an opportunity to figure out how to provide better service for that area. Thank you.
How far west do they want to go?
What's that?
With the UGA, how far west do they want to go?
They're going over, as you drive up Semiamu Parkway, you have all the community to the right. It's between the horizon and out to the ocean.
Yeah, okay, it's a chunk.
Whitehorn, pretty much.
Yeah.
Whitehorn and the reserve areas are all through that point, Whitehorn area.
The, I might add, I'm listening to some comments at the city council, but the chief and I also gave a presentation to the Semiamu breakfast group this morning. There's, there's, their concerns is, are traffic. And I explained to them, they also should be concerned about water because the, the existing developments or permitted developments have essentially used up all the water allocation. So water's an issue. Something's going to have to happen about water, not only ready liability, but how much they have. And the third is wastewater. That a preliminary, my preliminary understanding is Birch Bay isn't, wastewater folks aren't beating the drum looking forward to serve the area, so that's another cost to figure out how to get that affluent back over to this side, because it's going to be down on the other side of the ridge. So you're talking lift zones and all kinds of stuff. So believe me, the Station 62 staffing is only one of many issues that have to be, be tracked and understood. City's got a big job trying to figure out all this. It just isn't easy to say, well, we're going to make Blaine West take care of it, because right now, the best I can tell, from a assess evaluation standpoint at least, 35 or 40% of Blaine is already over there. And if all the population is going to be growth that way, that's 20 years from now, I wonder what it's going to look like. Maybe the retirement home, the retirement home convalescent hospital will be out over there someplace. Sure will be multifamily dwellings. So not a day issue, but it might be a weekend, Thursday kind of issue. Sorry.
No, if I could, just wanted to point out two things. One is, this concept of a UGA swap has never been done in the state of Washington. That's...
Right.
They've never done it. Nobody's ever done it. The second is, is that based on the next, the next agenda item, which is the D4 annexation that I'll talk about, the input I'm getting from the city of Bellingham is that UGAs are, well, not a thing of the past, they're being drastically scaled back. And so to take a legacy UGA and just want to take the legacy land, the State's Growth Management Act is going to, could restrict that somewhat. Cities and the state are looking for infill as opposed to expansion.
I really think that this is going to be viewed as just, even though they're kind of going in tandem, I bet through the evaluation process, they're going to be really viewed as two different things.
Yes, I agree.
Do we know what it takes to, if, let's say they do get rid of their existing UGA, do we, and that requires a vote of all the city residents. The formation of the new UGA, is that also all the city residents? Or I've heard rumor that it's potentially the property owners, which I think there's only two or three in that area.
I don't know the answer.
Okay, so to add on to that, you know, I sit on the Birch Bay Community Advisory Committee, and we have a meeting on the 31st of this month, and we have invited the planners from the county to discuss this issue, because I'm sure the county has to weigh in on this in their comprehensive plan that's, that's coming up. As well as we, we intend to invite Alex Winger from the city of Blaine, and I'm not sure if that's happened yet. We have heard back from the county, we know that they're going to be at that meeting. I don't know if Mr. Winger is going to be there, but he would certainly be a key player who understands where this project is going. So I'll, I'll be able to get a little bit more...
Make sure you ask him that question about who votes.
Right, yes, definitely. Because that, that could be a significant thing if, you know, if I, if I am a half of the proposed area property owner, I'm probably going to want to vote yes so I can develop my property, which doesn't seem like a fair way to do it, but not everything.
Well, I, I haven't picked up anything in the community yet, that there's any community groups on Blaine West that really zeroed in on this issue. I think it's just really going to kick off with the city council authorizing the staff to begin the process.
Right. I, I know that the Birch Bay community has significant issues with it, as well as, like you said, Birch Bay Water and Sewer said, of the three proposed UGA areas that Birch Bay was looking at, three, the worst, was that Point Whitehorn area because of the distance to the treatment plant, the number of pump stations, and the necessity to upgrade all the lines.
Yep.
I mean, the lines are at capacity now, so now if you add, you know, another thousand houses, you've got to put in larger lines and get it up off of Birch Bay Drive because the projection is, is that's going to be underwater in the next 50 years and so on. Lots of, lots of moving parts. Did you have, Mr. Crawford, did you go to a county...
No.
Let's see, we, the chief and I and Paulston attended, or met with Carletti at Station 63 to go over the information there, and I won't steal your thunder, I'll just say that, that, that we met. Personally, I was, I was really impressed with him and his overview of the project, and I didn't feel like I was dealing with somebody who's trying to upsell us into something that, that we potentially couldn't afford. He had some, probably three different scenarios that could potentially be in play there and, and, you know, advised, are we looking at just a five-year fix or a long-term fix, or, you know, where's our money best spent? So I, I personally was impressed with his presentation and...
I, I do would, would agree with, with the impression of him on the site. That's the first time I've actually worked with Quentin before. And I did just provide a copy of what he sent today. I don't know if you probably had a chance to review this, but again, this is still just in a draft proposal form. I spoke with Quentin this morning, and he's, had hoped to have had a final number for us today. And the final number would be actually contacting the sub-engineers from civil, mechanical, electrical, those types with their costs associated with the moving forwards. Now, that would just, that, that's not design or anything, that's just an architect fee that he's trying to encompass with. If...
Well, just not interrupt, but we'll, we'll go into detail in a minute.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah.
On, on that, just so...
Good enough, we will, okay. How was your, yeah, I, I got it.
Yeah, and then we had a finance meeting to kind of look at the first half of the year. Commissioner Anthony, myself and the chief met with Jessica and kind of went over the numbers, and it sounds like we're kind of right in the 50% point.
Looking good.
Of budget expenditures, so there, there weren't any huge red flags. I think, I, I don't know, yeah, you're going to do a, a budget update also there, so I'll, I'll get off of that soapbox. And then we have a, a initial contract negotiations meeting scheduled for the 22nd, which is probably going to be ground rules and date setting and things like that, and Chief Ralston looking at that as well, so. Local 106, welcome.
Thank you. So not a lot going on right now because it's summertime, but we do want to recognize John Glensy went over to Idaho with the Pips and Drums Band to play at the Palm Firefighters, the two memorials they had over there. So we really appreciate him taking the time to go over there and represent us and support them on that. That's all I got.
All right, thank you very much. Fire Marshal is not here. Anything that you know that...
No. He and I have been conversing about the, the school question about the, and I, which is important that they, we reached out for a meeting with the new superintendent. They asked us to wait till this week, which Joel's on vacation. I have my, this is Commissioner Week, so we're going to reach out next week and get a, a meeting on the calendar. It does appear, and Jenny was telling me, that there is a article in the Northern Light that the school's backed away from their plan, or it appears they're backing away from their plan to combine. So that, that was the indication that we had. Fire Marshal Nielsen did go through with the city, with the inspector from the city, and they did measure everything for occupancy, and legally it would work, but I think the prevailing, prevailing wisdom is that it may not be a great idea.
Good. Well, I think there's, there's enough groups, the teachers' union, the parents, fire department are, are all questioning whether this is a smart move or not.
Right.
So hopefully they will reconsider what they're going to do there. Who is responsible for the fire lanes down at the Semiamu Resort? Is that us?
Oh, yes.
People are enjoying the parking spaces along that back fence.
Oh, okay.
I've been down there twice in my Miata and can't drive my Miata through there, so I doubt we could get a fire truck in from it.
It shouldn't be on my motorcycle.
We'll send a motorcycle crew down there. All right. Move on to unfinished business. No man's land district boundaries.
We're in a holding pattern. We're coordinating with the treasurer's office on when the letters go out, so they've asked us to hold off for just a little bit, so.
Okay. I still have a party with this issue. I, I just, is there, like, not a statute of limitations? This thing has started in the 40s, perhaps?
1947.
So this has been going on for seven, 85 years. And now we got to pay.
There's no grandfather clause. We have, we have to annex them.
Well, I, I understand that, but the whole refunding of money for an area that was receiving the same exact level of service that... was receiving the same exact level of service that the guy across the street from them was, it's, I, if, if you were to ask me to vote whether we should do this, I would say no.
But this is for a three-year period, right?
Yes, sir.
It is.
It's the same as if, it's the same as if we made a mistake calculating something on, on our employees' paychecks.
But we didn't make the mistake. And I'm not, I'm not.
Just because you, you look like we're beating on you, we're really not.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm jumping on the county, not.
No, 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 I know, I think it has something to do with, we, we are the smallest, we're the smallest player in the room, and so we get stuck holding the bag. That's kinda how that works, I think.
Just the deal.
Okay, so then, if Glendon decided to annex a section of our district, we would then be required to reevaluate all of our remaining members of our district to make our tax revenue whole.
Correct.
So, does that mean now the county is going to re-rack everyone else in our fire district to make up for the loss that we incurred because of their miscalculation? I.e., District Four, if that annexation goes through, to get their budgeted money, they raise everybody else's taxes. So the county should, I'll, I'll pay my five bucks, or whatever it's gotta be, but I believe, and we can ask our attorney, that it would be up to the county to go back and reassess everyone in our fire district to make up for the loss.
Bruce, Bruce, I'm really sorry. I ran some numbers for our presentation this morning, and between 2023 and 2024, the assess evaluation of the fire district went up one point two billion dollars, just in a year, one point two billion dollars. So a million-dollar house in 2023 was paying eight forty-five. In 2024, that same million-dollar house is paying seven hundred and sixty-one dollars. So, they're paying eighty-four dollars less, assuming the value of their house didn't go up. So, your valuation issue is, is at issue, but the really issue is the one percent, it's not the value, it's the one percent. The one percent limit, which only gives us, what, two hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars a year, this year, two thirty-six. So it's, it's, the size of the toast is, piece of toast is getting bigger, but the spread in the butter on is getting thinner and thinner, so the.
I, I understand that, but I think it's, that's a, that's a separate issue from, how do we, how do we hold the county responsible for their piece to make sure that they assess our property correctly and give us the money that we are due? Now, if that chunk isn't in there, then it's their responsibility, in my opinion, that they spread that amount through the rest of the taxpayers.
Oh, I see what you mean.
That's, that's what the blob or the rules.
That is what will happen.
But not for the three-year back pay.
No, we get to pay that back.
I'd say we sue the county and get our money back, but I'm sorry, I, I don't mean to be a pain, but I would love to.
No, you're correct, somebody from the county shouldn't have been fired.
It, it, sorry, we're responsible for the taxpayers' money, and we're being told that we've gotta spend more of our taxpayers' money because of their mistake.
No, you're correct, we get, we get screwed every time we turn around, the county is screwing us because of their inept employees. I said it.
Anyway, I, I don't, I don't know the solution, I just, I, I just think that being a representative of our taxpayers, they deserve fair representation, and I don't think by us paying for a county's mistake is fair representation to the members of our district. I will step down from my soapbox.
But it'll be there next month.
All right, enough of that, sorry. So, at this point, a letter's gonna go out explaining?
That they're not in the fire district, and that they need to annex, and.
And the process by which we.
Process by which they do. It's, we're trying to coincide it with the letter from the county, so that they arrive roughly at the same time.
So do you think the majority of the people out there don't even realize this issue's going on?
None of them realize this issue.
They're gonna be confused when they get two letters, one from us.
And honestly, it's about twelve homes, it's about twelve, the rest of it's unimproved property.
You, did I, is there a ballpark number we're talking about?
Twelve thousand dollars.
I thought we were talking thirty-five, forty thousand, did that get read?
This is when I, it got readjusted, I, I didn't understand exactly how it worked, but it turns out that unimproved property doesn't pay tax to the fire district, so I included the AV of everything, and I needed, I went back and when we recalculated, the improved, improved properties is what it actually pays.
Well, the, the pain is marginally less, but it's still, the principle is.
Yes, no, the principle stands, I understand.
Thank you. D four.
D four, the District Four annexation is on the agenda for the City of Bellingham, Monday the twenty-first at seven PM, there'll be a public hearing. At that here, at that hearing, or at the conclusion of that hearing, the city can do one of three things, they can move forward with the annexation, they can deny the annexation, shut it down permanently, or they can ask city staff for more information and delay approval. There is, they'd be given no prevailing wisdom as to which way it will go. At the conclusion of that vote, if they choose to move forward, then District Four will enter the mitigation process with the City of Bellingham. There is nothing to do, as District Four is signators to the nineteen ninety-seven agreement, they're essentially prohibited by the agreement to oppose or, yeah, do anything, so they, this one is moving forward. Separately, Commissioner Cooley and I, Chair Cooley and I, and Chief Knowles from South Wachem, Chief Hewitt from Bellingham, Forrest Launergan from the City of Bellingham, and the City of Bellingham attorney are meeting to craft an update to the nineteen ninety-seven agreement. I believe the nineteen ninety-seven agreement probably started in twenty, in nineteen ninety-four, before you got to ninety-seven, so it's, it's gonna be a long process, but the districts look so much different now, and South Wachem is, I mean, there's, the city is now in areas that they never anticipated being in, it's, the agreement is, this is base, the, the group has agreed this is the last annexation that that agreement can be party to, and the city maintains that, and I think correctly, that they don't anticipate going anywhere in any other urban growth areas, because the state is forcing them, as I said, to do infill, and that's really where the focus is right now.
They were looking at that Bellevue Golf.
There is one North Bellingham Golf course, yes, that is the one exception to the rule, which actually, I will be in there also as both D four and D twenty-one's fire chief, because they're gonna now butt right up to our, they're, they're gonna start heading into us, if, if annexations were to start coming back on to.
Yeah, what's the closest service to that area besides sixty-nine?
Forty-three.
Which is.
District seven.
So there is no Bellingham fire station near that area if they choose to develop that?
No, there's a planned station in that area, that's, that's part of the plan, but they never seem to enact that plan, so.
They don't have any money. All right, any questions, comments about that?
You know, which often this might go?
I.
I, I know it's hard to.
I don't think they're gonna turn it down, I think they're either, they'll either approve it, or they'll ask staff for more questions. This is, from my, from what I understand, this, this is not gonna be a, City of Bellingham's coming up short on this one, they're, they're tied to this annexation, and because they agreed to do water and sewer, years in the nineties when that, when that development was built out, and the agreement that Bellingham has with, we'll call them rural or non-city residents, is they pay one point five times water and sewer rates, but now when they come to the city, they're gonna pay the city sewer rates, which is, so they're losing all that revenue from these areas that they've already been serving, and they don't really need to put any new infrastructure in, there's already sidewalks, streetlights, all those things, but it's still a net loss to the city when, when you look at, you know.
So they would lose fifty percent of their utility.
Fifty percent of their utility revenue. But because this, they had this agreement from the beginning, they have to.
Right.
Yep.
Thank you. Letter sixty-three.
Letter sixty-three, the insurance claim was approved by the insurance company, got the report yesterday, and we have identified a welder and the inspector, the welding inspector, who can do it here locally in the area, still waiting for True North on parts, so that's the big holdup right now. I don't even wanna give them anymore.
But insurance will cover the total cost.
Five, we have a five thousand dollar deductible.
Okay. That's cheaper than the original estimate you were thinking.
It was the best news I got all day, yes.
Well, thank you for following through with that.
And the, the engineer found no fault, there, it's not a maintenance, it wasn't a maintenance problem, it wasn't a, it wasn't a fault problem, there was no degradation to anything, it was.
It was a failure.
Weird failure, it had nothing to do with any, anything that was operated on or been maintained, so that felt good as well to know that it was.
Yeah, perfect. Good news for you.
Finally. Great news that we get it fixed.
Yeah. Station sixty-three, I guess that brings us, I'll let you go first, and then we can, do you have anything you wanna?
I, no, I've talked to, so I'll turn it over to Chief Ralston.
All right, so Chief Ralston is, is here, we met with Carletti on July second at the station, we walked around inside out, talked about multiple ways to skin cat here, I guess, if you were to put it that way, and I know, you know, the board's concern, of course, is financial and how much this is all gonna cost, but I think we, I'll speak for myself, we need to do something. And, you know, sometimes it costs money to do that, and we need to be prepared to figure out how to fund the project. We're not building the eighty million dollar station in Bellevue, but hopefully we could come up with something that's more user-friendly, safer, and works better for our person.
Yeah, thank you, sorry for jumping in a little ahead of time.
No, no.
Should've looked at the agenda, but anyway, the, we did have that meeting out there that day, again, I'll just reiterate the fact that I, I did like working with Quentin on that, I, I think he was reasonable with the understanding of our costs, keeping in mind, he's a well aware of the financial constraints moving forward, and how we've gotta be careful on, on the cost for this, but we do need to have something done. I did, I was hoping today that we would have a, a more completed document than the draft I just passed out this morning, again, this, this is just kind of a summary of what we did that day, out at Station sixty-three, I'll have you, you know, I'm not gonna go through the whole document now, but I just will say that he did come up with a couple of different options that we, per our walkthrough and discussions, whether it was a complete tear-down rebuild of the station living quarters, or was there an opportunity to maybe redo something internally, and in his just professional opinion, doing something remodeled internally is gonna be the, the most cost-effective, less expense than a complete tear-down and remodel, but, you know, we still have to get to those numbers for that. He is currently got, working with his subs for a, a proposal fee that would be set up for their fees, we don't have construction design numbers yet, but we would have, hopefully he's gonna have that by next week, we'll have a, an updated AIA contract proposal, some numbers for our next meeting, I would anticipate that we could also have that, the contract, enough time that we could run it through legal and have them give their okay, so by our next meeting in August, we should have up numbers that the board could then look at and then approve for contracts for, for the architect for that. One of the areas that he did recommend prior to that is getting the, the site surveyed, there is not a current site survey available, with that, there's not any as-bills of the station currently that, that they could look, so that's gonna have to be done, and the district is, is gonna do that themselves, outside of Carletti's involvement for that, I, I like what he's talking about, if there's some things that we can say some costs on, we can do that, and I've asked for two site survey estimates, I expect I've got one that's in play, both from Bellingham, the other, I'll expect next week, the individual's been on vacation, he comes back to work on Monday, so then we'll at least have an idea what the cost would be to have the site survey done exterior, which would be boundary points, station exterior, probably utilities, that type of stuff. And then the other item that he requested was there's a, a design company out of Issaquah that would actually come in and do the internal schematics that they would have to do a remodel of the station, and he, he needs to have that, whatever we do, we have to have those.
We don't have any as-bills on record.
As-bill, we don't have the actual as-bills, we've got the sprinkler plan, we've got a couple, we've got a couple plans, but we don't have the actual as-bills that we need.
Is, is there anything on the, that back edition from, I mean, it was a more recent?
There, we have some on the, on the back edition, but we, but we need the front, the front half is.
Sure.
The other item that I, I did speak with Quentin this morning, that he said too, that an area that, of the, the front building in a remodel, if we were to do that, they actually need to take a look at the existing wall structure, the bricks, and determine how they are structurally sound, do they have rebar in them, you know, what that type, so if they, to move forward, but they've gotta get an idea for that, so there would be an additional survey done, that they would actually bring in some X-ray, a company comes in with X-rays, and X-rays is the, the exterior of the building to get an idea structurally, and that's done through the structural engineer, King Works, Jack King basically is the person that's involved with that, so I was informed of that today, that they'll wanna try to look at doing that, too. So there's some upcoming, just site prep work that we need to do to get in preparation for whatever we're gonna approve in there to do. The, again, those estimates and, and contracts will be done, and payments will be done through the district, not through the, the firm of, of Carletti. One of the areas, too, the AIA contract is actually something that he's gonna purchase and get, we'll get, we'll reimburse him for, that's like a hundred and fifty dollar cost that they've been, form fill it out and, and, and get it, that's what we're gonna start to use, so there's a cost associated for this contract that we purchase online, and then he goes in, fills it all out, so he asked if, if we could purchase. So he asked if, if we could purchase it. I said, just go ahead and purchase that and include it in, and he's going to prepare that as part of the document that we go forward with.
And that's for the agreement for his services or?
Correct, that's, that's the AIA contract, yes. So there will be the scope of work and then there's the actual contract. That, then, that contract would be in a word document that we could then ship off and make comment back and forth with attorneys and themselves to get an actual agreement in play that we'd have. Hopefully, we should have that ready for our, for our next board meeting.
Do you intend to use the mitigation funds to take care of this currently?
Yes.
So there will be some costs associated with that site survey internal. I will have a better idea. We will have those numbers by the next board meeting, but those are going to be. You know, I think the initial one was around, the site survey was in the $5,000 range. I'm going to compare that, make sure that's a good number. I don't have anything for the, the 3D internal, internal yet, we'll have that next week. So, but we're not talking about large dollars, but there's costs associated that we'll have to take out of mitigation fees to make that happen.
And from my understanding, when I was there, he felt that this, in, in lieu of the as-bills, this 3D company was a, a good way to go. And they came highly recommended and, and.
Yep, they'll come in and, and basically laser everything in there and you'll get complete modules. So they can use that to look at remodeling how the station would be. And they've got to have that in order to do anything for proposals outside of, even, even for a, a tear down. And if we move some stuff, they're still going to need that type of stuff to work with, so.
These will be digitized from the beginning.
Sure.
We would have been able to provide paper as-bills that would have had to been digitized anyway, so it's.
It would be costly either way. And so just to sort of wrap my head around the, the potential options that we are looking at. I mean, we had, we had talked about scraping off the front living quarters and bringing in modular stuff. I was, I was at Peace Health recently and noticed that they have a ton of those out there, which actually look, look pretty good. Complete tear down and rebuild, which I think is most likely out of our budget realm. And then remodel the front for like community room and offices, et cetera. And move the living quarters and all that to where the mechanic's bay is. And then build a less expensive mechanic shop somewhere else, which is cheaper if it's not attached to a fire station, right? If, if you were to leave the mechanic bay there, the requirements to have that attached to a fire station are significantly greater than, hey, we can go to Haney and put up a whole building or whatever it takes that's insulated and safe from aslips. Would be an option. Hi. What do you need?
Oh, just more ILYs here. I have some paperwork and stuff that you might be interested in, or just for us. I noticed you don't have an account with us when other.
We're, we're actually in the middle of a commissioner meeting. If, if you need to talk with the.
If you could leave it on the counter and leave your card, I'll have the mechanic get in contact with you.
Perfect, thank you.
Thanks. Sorry. Anyway, back, if we decide to do that, it might be an option to move the living quarters into that back area.
Locate them. And I think that's going to be one of the cost estimates that they're going to do and prepare for, so that the commissioners can decide the best avenue to go.
I didn't realize that that back section was built at a different stage. What year was that?
96. 96?
It was 96. So newer, it actually, I think is seismicly safe, which I don't think the front is, but, so that has some pluses.
Has some potential.
To it. And I think with the height.
The height was good.
Talking that you could potentially have an upper floor for bunk rooms or whatever. So we just had more people. Is it, no one here at the station?
What question, Jack?
I think they're on a call.
Can I have a question?
Yes.
So when it comes to design, design criteria, is, is your perspective, chief, is that we're building something to take care of sleeping four people? Or are we building something that's going to take care of, hopefully someday, an apparatus and an aid car both? So 20 years from now, what are you?
I would say we, we'd be, I would recommend building it for no less than seven personnel, to, to house seven personnel. So a five-person crew plus a battalion chief plus a trainee, probie, what, you know, some, some sort of training capacity. So that there's, there's extra space.
My stage in life, I judge roofs and fences that they're going to outlast me. So I'd hate, you know, if I cannot beat, if I can have no, a right in Kennedy not beat me for election here. I would like in the next six years not have to revisit this issue because we're a half a bit short.
We, we need to build it. And I, you know, there's a local school district that built a, a brand new middle school and it took, took quite a lift to get the bond passed to build it. And they built it and it was over capacity the day they opened it. And the public's never let them forget it. And I don't, I don't want to be that guy. So, no, we need to, we need to build it for, for the future, look at growth and, and plan accordingly.
Good. And, yeah, I, I agree with you. I mean, we're all thinking, okay, we've got a certain amount of money that we can spend. But, you know, if we spend a couple million dollars and we have something that was good for yesterday, we probably not fix the problem here, so.
And even, even if we don't build it out today, but allow for the expansion capacity with the shell that's there.
Right, yeah. Just like, okay, this works for today, but tomorrow we've got upstairs or outside in front or.
So chief, don't bring back two sets of bunk beds.
Anything else, chief?
No.
No, thank you very much for the time you're, you're putting in on that and, and your thoroughness. And, and, you know, I, I guess as, if we get information ahead of the packet, can we forward it out? Or just so that we have time to digest it a little bit more? Does that work for you, Jenny, that we can just forward it out? Appreciate that. Anything else under unfinished business? New business. Mr. Crawford, Watkin County Work Crew.
Hey, so you have in front of you a, now that I've thrown hand grenade to the county, I would like you to bring forward a contract with the county that is currently in place with the Fire District here in Watkin. I was out riding my motorcycle one day, imagine that, and stopped at the local fire district because they had this county work crew in front of their station. Got into a discussion with their, the county employee and found out that there's a contract between them and the fire district. And I talked with our lawn guy. And our lawn guy exclusively does mowing. He doesn't do shrubbery, he doesn't do landscaping at the station. Does exclusively mowing and weed whacking. So this crew with the county actually goes and removes shrubbery and does some landscaping and things like that. So I asked that this be distributed to you so that you could get some eyes on it. And maybe we can discuss it in our next meeting if we'd like to enter into an agreement with the county for that service that's provided. Do you understand that a lot of guys talk a little landscape?
Yes, 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 thank you. So the cost of this compared to what we're.
Compared to what we're paying is, that's way more affordable.
This is?
It's just, it, it's a, I, I think there's, having reviewed the contract and the, and the terms, it has merit. We can certainly use it. It'll be great for like fall and spring cleanups. You know, first thing I thought of was the, the shrubbery, the hedge in front of 63. So it's, it's a, I believe you get 40 hours, you can get up to 40 hours a year.
Okay.
And they like it in eight-hour blocks.
It's back here in exhibit B of the cost.
Gotcha.
So, yeah, no, I'm happy to, to reach out to them and bring you a draft.
Make a quick comment. I've used them before when I was the chief and, and just for those specific projects, once or twice a year, come in and do them.
Right.
And, and they were good. The supervisor that was usually in charge made sure things got done. They're not necessarily there for their time commitment in the morning hour, but it is a good service to do. And I was happy with the work that they did. This has been a few years back, but.
That's South Watkin.
It is, okay. I wondered.
I didn't, I didn't want to throw that out there.
Yes, it is South Watkin.
So if Tony was here, I, I'm sure that he would just like what Dave said, say the same thing. But Haney and Simian would need some work.
All right. So what do we need? Are we?
Just, you, you can just give me verbal direction to, to run down a contract, you know, reach out to the county work crew for a contract with North Watkin and.
We can sign it at another meeting.
At the next meeting, yeah. If, if I can get it out of the county that quick.
And if feature me. Very good. Does that sound good to you?
Yep.
Thank you for riding your motorcycle.
Lawn guy is going to appreciate it, so.
Get back out on that motorcycle and find another deal.
I'll try. That's what it's all about.
All right, so I'm, the board seems amenable to you moving forward with that contract and bringing it back for our signatures when ready. Get your budget update.
Okay. Just real quick, Liz, I'll give you this document that I'm referencing, sorry I didn't grab.
You've got more than one copy there, so.
Do I?
Yep.
Is this for them too?
Yep.
Is this for the commissioners?
No, the commissioners have it, this is just a unit extra.
Okay, so as Commissioner Ansel alluded to, this is a, kind of a, just a mid-year budget update. We're halfway through the year. Books are reconciled and this, and what you see here in this budget versus actual to the end of last month. And we're sitting right at 50% on, in most, in most divisions. And I don't have any particular areas of concern. Well, I have one that I would like to bring up. But really, we're, if, when you look at this, I would encourage you to, to remember that there are certain things that we pay in January every year. And so that's going to max out that line item. So for instance, insurance. And you'll see insurance spread through administration. You'll see insurance in, in our fleet budget. You'll see insurance in, and in facilities. So some are already, you're already going to see them at 100%. What we're, what we're looking at, what I look at this, is the, the division total in bold at the end. And that's where, that's where we, we gauge our, how are we doing mid-year? The biggest area of concern that I have actually right now is building maintenance, which should come to, nobody's surprise. We are at like 89%, I want to say, 79% for, for repair and maintenance of stations in the line item. I don't, and I, I will be honest, that I don't typically throttle that unless it's really a superfluous fix. Some of the things that we fixed this year have been HVAC units, which are, you know, they're aging, just like all of our stations. We had to fix a pressure reduce valve, pressure reducing valve here at Station 61. The, the hum that used to go on overhead over, every once in a while. That's a, you know, at a prevailing wage, that's a several thousand dollar, you know, expense. So we've tried to break things out and add more, more lines. So you're, now you'll see lines for things like appliance, appliances, furniture, repair. We've also broken out what we consider maintenance service contract, which is, you know, linen sheet metal or, you know, plumbers, those kind of things for ongoing maintenance, so that we're not using money from the maintenance to pay for preventative maintenance. But the, the, the problem is, is that everything's old and it's getting older. And it's getting more expensive to repair or replace. Other than that, I'm, I am pleased with where we're at. We have not had to transfer any money from reserves yet. And I say yet capitalized, underlined and bolded. That will happen before we get our next disbursement money of funds from the county in October. I anticipate September, we're probably going to have to transfer about a million dollars out of reserves, up to a million dollars out of reserves to make, to, to pay our bills.
And we have projected 1.6.
So. That is my budget update. I, please take a look through, Commissioner Anthony.
Is there any planned apparatus purchases during mid of the year?
No.
What's the next apparatus that's up?
Well, Engine 61 is the next fire apparatus that's up. Aid cars plural are the next.
So Engine 61, how many years?
It is 2007, so it's 18 years old.
Coming right up against the limit. How long does it take to get an engine?
Three years.
Three years.
It's going to go over. We, we would, we're going to need to order something in 2026, basically.
There's a way the district works. We already have, this is what we want our engines to look like?
Yes, sir. We have a spec. And we've revised that spec from a, a total custom to basically like a.
Floor model?
Floor model with, with, with the number of additions under what, what gets it to a custom threshold. So a lot of the manufacturers now are, say, if you buy, you know, we make this, this model, this model, this model. And if you put less than, if you have less than 10 change orders, we can fit it in at this discounted price.
So absent directions from the board. Do you have plan, what's your plan to propose in 2026 budget on apparatus?
I, I don't have a plan yet because I don't know. I, quite frankly, I am waiting to see what the political climate is. I'm waiting to see what happens with the library and see how my interactions are with the communities as we potentially look for a lid lift. Our apparatus reserve right now, the budget sits just about 850K. The most recent quote I got for a replacement engine is $1.3 million. So if we choose, and, and the apparatus manufacturers are no longer guaranteeing their price. You are signing a contract for an assumed amount, but the market drives the final price. So I don't want to commit all 850-plus money out of the operational budget. So, I don't wanna commit all eight hundred and fifty plus money out of the operational budget that we already don't have, because we budgeted one point six in the negative. I gave you an article about three-person staffing, which we know from the NIST study is less than ideal, but it's...
Twenty-five percent.
It's what we can go with, it's what we can do. I'd rather have three people arrive on an old piece of apparatus than two people arrive on a brand-new parade rig. So, we're, we're gonna have, we collectively are gonna have to make that decision, I will bring you the plan as soon as we get some clarity about which direction we're heading, but right now, I, I, I don't wanna put all the chips. I don't wanna take all of our apparatus reserve and plus some and spend it. It just seems foolish.
I think we talked about not paying cash for anything anymore anyway.
Yes. Well, but we're still committing and...
Right, right, no, it's, but, you know, a...
Yep.
Ten, fifteen-year payment is cheaper than a lump sum. It is for the income that we are currently receiving.
I agree, but we can't service debt with apparatus reserve. We have to service debt out of the operational budget?
The operational budget only grows three hundred and four thousand dollars a year, so every five years, I guess.
And, and, sorry, not to be the Debbie Downer, but we just talked about replacing a station, which we can't take that money. If we, we can use mitigation to a certain point.
Right.
Which we have, six, six hundred and fifty K, but we're obviously talking about potentially financing some. That too can't come out of facility reserve, that has to come out of the operational budget, so if, how many, I'm sorry.
I just, the way I think about this, every time we talk about this, it comes out of operational reserve. You know, I harp on two hundred and forty thousand, whatever it is increment, but when we really talk about it, it's shift days. How many days, shift days on engines are we promising? And so, I'm not a big fan of borrowing money, I'm not a big fan of committing shift days. So I'm only committed to that I can see the edge of the cliff coming, and we gotta figure it out.
Any questions about the budget?
They're doing, I had a chance to, to watch this over the last six months, they do an outstanding job. Outstanding job.
Yes, and thank you to Jessica for providing the detailed report.
Yes, and for, and for bringing a new perspective to budgeting and helping, that was really pivotal this year, is to help us break out and really, the, the budget is a story. And it used to be, those of us that were here, several administrations ago, remember page after page after page of, of spreadsheet data. But we winnowed it down too far, so we do need to expand it out a little bit to be able to see exactly where we're spending money, and we're, we're getting better, and Jessica's perspective has been very helpful.
BLS debt collections.
Talking about money.
Sure.
Before you is a draft resolution. I am not asking for approval today, but each year, we, we do BLS transports, and each year, we write off a significant portion of BLS transports. We do not take anybody to collections. Fortunately, I think the time has arrived, looking at our financial future that we need to count, we, we need to be made as whole as possible when we provide a service to the public. One way we can provide revenue is through BLS transports, and unfortunately, about a hundred thousand dollars a year goes unpaid. And there's no recourse, people can just walk away from it. This is not removing the ability for charity care, or for me to waive individually charges. I do do that multiple times a year. It involves a process where the, the person writes a letter and they provide documentation, and I, I do have the ability, or you've given me the ability to write those off, and I, ninety-nine percent of the time, I do. This is, this is designed for only people that have, people that have insurance, so not Medicare, not Medicaid. We, we are not legally allowed to collect from, from people that have those forms of healthcare. People that have insurance that don't pay their portion, that they, they're out of pocket expenses.
Copay or they're...
Correct, that's, that's all this allows us to do. So, there are other districts in the county, namely Fire District Seven, that, that does this. They do get seventy, eighty thousand dollars a year worth of revenue out of it. What they do is that they contract with a firm out of Mount Vernon, so it's a, it's as local, fairly local. And they do what they call soft collections on people that have medical debt. And I'm asking the board to read the resolution, consider whether this is a revenue path that we wanna pursue, and let me know. We do have the policy, policy procedures built into this as well. And I'm, I'm happy to provide those if you wanna see, I suppose those deal with financials, so you would, you would have to sign off on those policies and procedures as far, so I will provide those to you, I don't think they're...
Yeah, they are.
Are they? Did I give, oh, I did look at that. You drove him out of me, is what happened. So, the policy procedure, the drafts, the, these are District Seven, they'd be reformatted into, into District Twenty-One, obviously. So, you can see what kind of teeth this policy would have. Balanced billing is illegal in the state of Washington, that's not what we're asking to do. Balanced billing is, your insurance says, we'll pay five hundred dollars for an ambulance transport, we bill twenty-five hundred dollars, and we can go out, we can go after them up to two thou, twenty-five hundred dollars, we're not asking for that. All we're asking to do is to collect on someone's, what their obligation is via their, based on their insurance plan. The how to, the, the way that the collection company gets paid is one of two ways, we've selected the, the option, you can either, they charge thirty-five percent for the, of the amount collected per, per collection. So, if you owe a hundred dollars, the fee would be thirty-five dollars. What we are, what I'm proposing is that we have that thirty-five percent cut out of our money that's returned to us, not added to the person's medical debt. So that there's no additional medical debt piled on, that's not what we're looking to do, we're trying, trying to...
It, it seems reasonable to me. But I think it's important that if you plan to bring this back to the next board meeting, to get us to consider to adopt this, that sometime you figure out a way to have a conversation with the other two commissioners about it in a little more detail, just like you've done with us, or make sure they watch YouTube, I guess. Because I hate for them somehow to come in and feel, catch this cold and go, and now we're gonna vote, so. I just wanna make sure the other two commissioners have an opportunity to reflect on this issue, so they don't think we're railroading it through.
It is in their packet.
Okay.
As it was in ours, but I agree that maybe a conversation...
Yes.
Just ask if you've got any questions or anything like, like that.
No, I have no...
EMS transport fees have grown throughout the fire districts over the years. We used to not charge at all, when, where I came from, maybe here as well, but it's the cost of doing business, and unfortunately, every time we ask the public to fund our operations, they say no. And we can't do business without funding the operation. You know, eighty thousand dollars isn't gonna pay for a lot, but, you know, fuel costs go up and everything is, is going up greater than one percent, and we've gotta, we've gotta, I guess, demonstrate to the public that it costs money to run a fire department. And if, if they're not gonna fund it, we're gonna have to figure out creative ways of doing that, so. I'm supportive of the proposal. I'd like to make sure the other two commissioners are aware of why we need to do this. Now, this also goes back to our, our budget prep last year, right? We, we sat down and, and talked about ways of generating more income, and this, this was one of the things on the list. So, appreciate you following through with that and, and bringing it forward to us, so. I, I, I hope we never get to the point where every time we go on a call, we, we leave an invoice for our services before we go home. That, I mean, unfortunately, if, if people don't approve our levy lid lifts, it may come to that, that someday, but I, I hope we, we never get. Any other new business? Correspondence is in our packet, I appreciate the, the county punting their responsibility on enforcing fireworks ordinances in our jurisdiction in Bridge Bay. Board meeting attendance on the twenty-first.
Yeah.
I, I might have to zoom in.
Are you driving a bus?
Yeah, I'm gonna start that again, but I've got a motorcycle trip.
Take your helmet off. In August. I'm available, we'll see, I'm assuming Kimberly and Brad are, but we can check. Budget study session date, so I think we kinda wanna get ahead of the curve here this year on preparation for next year's budget. So sometime after Labor Day and in between contract negotiations, excuse me, if we can start looking at calendars and thinking sometimes where we, as a board, can get together and also invite District Four, all or, or some of them to attend.
Are we looking September or October?
After Labor Day, I think was, yes.
So, we have some, I'd like to offer up a couple days, Wednesday the third, September, sorry, Wednesday, September third.
This is a, I'll be, since I'm new here, typically, when is bargaining wrapped up?
Sorry?
When is bargaining normally completed? What?
December.
Preferably before the contract expires.
Okay.
Have... We went past, what, three contracts ago, I think?
Two or three.
We, we tried to resolve it before December thirty-first.
Okay, so that doesn't play any role in scheduling the dates?
Not really.
I just...
Um, it, it's probably beneficial for planning purposes too, to figure out where we are in the contract proposals for budgeting.
So, just the one date you're looking at?
No, September third, September tenth, September seventeenth.
There's a pattern here.
And either the twenty-third or the twenty-fourth of September.
Are we picking one, or are you writing up?
Uh, I'm just offering days up in September.
Okay.
Three-ten or seventeen, I'm gone after that. For three, four weeks.
So, what time are you talking on these dates?
Well, in the interest of staff sanity, I would propose daytime budget study sessions. Uh, it's... Yeah, that kinda makes it hard for you, huh?
Well, the first couple weeks, yeah, we got conferences and this, that, and the other, so kinda screwed.
If we did afternoon, evening, would that work? Like, not evening like seven o'clock, but like, we meant it like four? That's not gonna work, okay.
We, we find some times and we'll see if something can work. I'm usually, I'm usually done at nine-thirty, from nine-thirty to about one, good, then I go back.
Good.
From one to five. Maybe thirty, maybe we do it, you know, two meetings and...
Oh, yeah.
Okay, whatever.
Yeah, I mean, I think...
Those are my hours, those are kinda what I'm limited to.
Your staff would prefer daytime?
Yep.
I am available three-ten, seventeen.
Good.
I'm looking like tenth and seventeenth, maybe.
What?
Tenth and seventeenth.
Greg, where are you?
The earlier the better in the month.
So, three-ten?
Works for me.
So, let's see if we can, I, I think we're gonna need at least two.
Yes.
In September, or just?
Yeah.
Two in September?
Yeah. I'd like to at least schedule two. So, if we can get feedback from Commissioner McMurray and Rickberg.
And we're bringing District Four along too, correct?
We're gonna invite them. I don't, uh, two of them don't work, so I would expect they could attend, I don't, I don't know if, who's...
Mr. Land works.
Yeah, whether he can zoom or whatever, but anyway, we'll, we'll extend the invitations to them. With that, we'll see what the, most people can make it, we may not be able to get everybody, but...
Yeah, Ansel said third or ten.
Three, seven, I'm good for three-ten and seventeen.
And Crawford said?
Your preference is ten, seventeen?
It was the ten, seventeen, yes.
And seventeen works for me.
Tenth and the seventeenth. And we'll, we'll run them between nine-thirty and, and one, Commissioner Crawford.
Well, if we go longer, we'll get you up there.
And then, we have, we have dates proposed, I mean, proposed dates for October, but maybe we should see what, if, if we need another one.
Yeah, well, I mean, that whole thing, until we approve the budget, we'll...
Yep.
They can pick the next day at the meeting.
Right.
One of these meetings.
I mean, I, it's an ongoing process, so...
Just help me understand the agenda for these meetings. What?
For the budget?
Yeah, what, what are we figuring out?
I think this, this year, we'll be, we'll, we'll be looking at what we're gonna, what we're gonna budget next, you know, kind of figure out what, what our priorities are next year. But also, I think it's the beginning of the levy, the levy planning process, really, is...
How much money do we need?
How much money do we need?
How much we're gonna take out of reserve in twenty-twenty-six?
Right. Right.
And do we have enough money to at least make it to January of twenty-twenty-seven?
Correct.
And how low can we go on our total reserve, all the numbers we have added together?
Right.
Do we take the department below three thou, three million dollars in all these accounts? So is it five million dollars? Can we make it to the end? I can see that. I don't, I don't see that I'm overly excited about how much the budget on facility maintenance.
No, it's...
Because I know nothing about that, and I know you guys do.
It's, it's the higher level, figuring out where, what, have the, like you said, the discussion about what's our threshold for drawing out of reserves next year for twenty-six, and like at the beginning of that levy lid lift, you know, are we budgeting for, for three years, four years, five years down the road? What, what do we, what do we need to start a levy lid lift at so that at the end of, you know, a four- or five-year levy plan, where we need to go back to the voters? And those are the questions that we, that's what we need to discuss.
Those are great questions. I can see the budget workshop, working on what's a levy lift need to be, or at least buying the concept, we need enough to make sure we don't have to come back and, if they say yes, that we don't have to come back and ask again for at least five years. Okay.
Next meeting, agenda items. So we have the response performance review. I believe Commissioner Anthony had brought this to our attention, that we have this resolution from twenty-eleven that suggests that we get a report on our performance.
Yes, and, and the chiefs, the chiefs got all the numbers. We worked together to get them done, but it's not a, there's so many things going on right now. Actually, the chief and I just didn't have the time to do it justice, we just needed a little break to take it back to the next meeting. Too many irons in the fire right now.
But we have this now for the board to review, and then have a discussion about it at our next meeting.
Yeah.
So I encourage the three of us and the two that aren't here to make sure that they, this wasn't in our packet, so...
But I can send it out.
Yeah, to make sure that we get that out, so that everyone can take a look. Awesome. And thank you for working on that, bringing it to our attention.
I think it's gonna be really important information as we help educate on what our actual response time are into different areas of the district, and you only can do what you can do. You can't say, okay, everybody, I want you to drive an extra ten miles an hour and get there quicker. Distance is distance.
Ten, nine-minute train delay is already out of me, as I experienced this morning. All right, for, so next meeting, we've still got the district boundary issue, we still have D four annexation issue, you can give the ladder sixty-three in your chief's report when, if that happens, doesn't have to be under our control. Birch Bay sixty-three will have some, hopefully, hard numbers to look at. The work crew contract, if it's available, you can put it on, if it's not, it can ride until it's ready. BLS debt collection, we'll have a clean resolution for next meeting for that, and then finalization of the budget study session dates, and the performance review. A lot of stuff to do. Any other business?
Hope.
Move to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Please adjourn.